Brain is what I was thinking. Thank you, Michael and Faith. That's all, Darrell.
Okay, um, thank you. And history before we open it to both sides. And I think if you would wouldn't mind, Michael, starting at the beginning of this process of how we got to the CBB consideration and the designation of it to and opening it, I should say, opening it up to bid. Could you kind of go from the beginning as to the process that we went through?
Sure. So the city from time to time reviews any organization that it either created and or designated. We started the process a little over a year ago. We did it with revolving loan fund. We reviewed that process at the time in something very similar to what we did for the CBB. In that case, it was also a designation of someone to manage the revolving loan fund. We reviewed the the current designate, we did the same process of going out for proposals, had a review committee in the same way, and then chose the designate for the revolving loan fund from there. We also have done it with the both the enabling legislation and the bylaws of the other entities that existed under the city, namely the Tourism Business Improvement District and the Livingston Business Improvement District. So we reviewed both of those. In the case of the Tourism Business Improvement District, we didn't make any changes to their bylaws, but we did ask for some more adherence to the bylaws. There were some areas that they were not adhering to the bylaws. So that was reviewed there. For the Livingston Business Improvement District, there was actually some information that didn't get from the enabling legislation or when the commission created it into the bylaws. So we made some changes there. And then the process moved on. It about five years ago by the city commission. So we went through the same process we did for revolving loan fund. We did a 30 day open period for bids. We already mentioned a little bit about the legal actions that changed the timeline slightly, but the overall process was was pretty similar. Got both bids, sent those out to the review committee, came back in and then brought them before you for your consideration. So just to be clear, the consideration for you tonight is to change the designation. If you do not change the designation, if the if the motion is not made or a motion fails to accept this resolution, then the designation does not change and because the resolution 4556 is not amended. So the choice for you tonight is to either not change resolution 4556 or amend it to designate the Livingston Business Improvement District and or to amend it and designate the Livingston Business Improvement District. Other than that, the process went forward as most all these review processes do. So there's nothing specific or different about this particular one.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other clarifying questions before we open it to the public?
Darrell, I would add to your question. And, Michael, is there anything that you could elaborate on about how selection committees? I know different committees are created differently according to the structure of our government. So if you could explain a little bit how that was done for the revolving loan fund, the CBB, or any other similar 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 groups. And then these, the way that we score, or not we, because we didn't score it, but the way these selection committees score things, how those criteria are determined? That could be some useful background. Thank you.
So there's no specific requirement for how we go through a process of scoring or selecting bid proposals. In the end, it's always the commission's decision. The commission decides on if there's a new bid, who gets that bid, or if there's a bid to be changed, or if there's a designation to be changed, if it's changed or not. So these selection committees are just recommending bodies. Because they are outside of the legislative process, they're created by the by my office. We create those committees under the authority given to me in city statutes. So those committees are selected just to allow community input. We wouldn't have to use them if we didn't want to, but it's always nice to get community members involved in the process. Let them be able to do it. In the case of the revolving loan fund, we used some local financial experts. We use the finance officers from both the county and the city. And I think there was one more member that I don't remember off the top of my head. If it's a bid for construction, it's almost always public works. We don't usually do committees for those because it's more technical and more specific to the city. In this case, we used either businesses related city functions and or experts in the field for a selection committee of five in this case. And then they get the packets, or in this case, the proposals by any submitting agency. And then they score them according to the criteria they're given, which you can see again on page 37. We'll see if we can share that with you in just a second. And then they give their recommendation to me and I provide it to you. And then the city commission makes the decision on whether or not to accept that recommendation.
Okay. Is that enough information, Melissa?
Yes.
Any questions?
Yeah, thank you very much.
Okay, so we will now open.
Darrell, real quick, can I just add that we did receive from the city both proposals. I mean, I did, I reviewed proposals from the chamber and the L bid, just so everybody knows that we did receive that. Thank you.
All right, thanks. All right, last call on questions. Any questions? Clarifying questions before we open it to the public? Okay. Any public comments? Please state your name and address.
Hi, this is Leslie Feigl. 303 East Park Street, the CEO for the Livingston Chamber Convention and Visitors Bureau. And the screen just changed on you guys. I don't know if you know that. And the TBID. So first of all, I guess I wanted to ask, how come is Mike was going through this process? We didn't receive a phone call, an email, a request, a meeting. We have concerns or we'd like to see some changes. I was in front of the you as the commission, a couple it's hard to say, involved in meetings many times. And yet, nothing was ever brought up. And nobody had any concerns about any of the marketing plans. You know, with the awards that have been won and the the marketing plan that I actually entered, the Office of Tourism told me to utilize the plan that we currently are in, that we are under contract for. And I find it very interesting to see that those questions that you gave the committee that you, Mike, created in your handpicked committee, that those questions, there was one of them that is on there. If you were to bring that up there, Faith, and put it on the screen, the questionnaire at the very bottom from the committee. There's a question on there that has, if you're able to pull that up there, Faith, that'd be great. Has the TBID on it? There you go. Ability to adhere to Tourism Advising Council rules, regulations to protect the Livingston CBB. I mean, why wouldn't that be a five? Since we pass all of our audits and we've written successful marketing plans and ability to work collaboratively and efficiently with the TBID. I'm the business manager for the TBID. I am the director of the TBID. I created the TBID. And, you know, I'm finding that this this scale that was written and your handpicked committee, Mr. Cardes, this was extremely extremely disappointing, to say the least. And I am very disappointed in the way that this has been handled. I know that this community, as they've been finding out about this, have been trying to get a hold of the commission and you know, get their get their words in there about how they feel about this whole process. But, you know, I am I'm very taken back by this whole entire process. Being that Mike has never once walked in the door to or called or emailed directly to talk about his concerns with the CBB and the marketing plan that we currently are utilizing. I am, I just don't even know at this point what else I can say. It is it's unconscionable, the way that this has been handled. I am extremely disappointed. And I'm only asking the commission to please take into consideration all of the efforts that I have put in over the years and the and to look at the way that this is handled. So first of all, the the city does not collect the funds for the CBB. That is a state funded. That is a state tax and is handled by them. The only thing that the city needed to do was give us a resolution in the original beginning. And then we created our CBB and we follow and we run under the state and under the TAC and the Office of Tourism. After we have a resolution, our plans have been extremely successful. And again, on that little note that they're doing the the opinions by from your committee, you know, our worldwide marketing plan, Livingston never had it. And it has been very successful. And the numbers that are coming in and the people that are visiting, we have Italy is is now booking directly with Park County down at Sage Lodge. And that's due to the efforts that I have I have done. And I think that, again, if the commission could please look at the way that Mr. Cardes has handled this. And if there was ever a problem, I think it would have been pretty easy just to address it with me and to to discuss this moving forward. You know, I I don't even know what to say at this point. This is this is actually really incredible that this is on the table at this time and during this pandemic. When we already have enough things that we're already working on.
I am now on Zoom. I got in. Without just calling in, I can see everyone. Well, most people, I can't see everyone. Thank you, Leslie. Any last comments or questions as I move through the the public? Okay. Thank you. Yep. Next person, please come on in.
104 South Fifth Street, Livingston.
Would you say your name again?
I'm sorry?
Would you say your name again? You kind of went out for a second. Name and address, please.
My name is Jack Luther. I live at 104 South Fifth Street in Livingston. First of all, let me say that I don't have a dog in this fight. I don't own property downtown. I don't have to pay into the TIF fund or anything like that. I, for a number of years, have attended the L bid meetings. It's a seven member board composed of volunteers. It meets once a month. Several of these meetings that I've attended over the years, they didn't have a quorum and they didn't weren't able to have a meeting. I like the L bid. They do a good job. They do the flowers on the on the poles. They take care of the trash downtown. They take care of the graffiti in town. They put up the banners on the on the poles and they and they sponsor and help fund the events. So I don't have anything bad to say about the L bid. I think that's a great organization. I think they do a good job. I don't have much to do with the chamber, but I know that in April of 2015, the chamber was granted Convention Visitors Bureau status and they were extremely pleased that they got that. They worked hard to get it for five years. Now the chamber has administered the Convention Visitors Bureau. They filed marketing plans. They've advertised and implemented to promote Livingston worldwide. They've done a heck of a job. No problems with that. My problem is that if this Convention Visitors Bureau to the L bid, you've got a seven member volunteer board that meets once a month. There's a lot of work that's involved with this Convention Visitors Bureau as far as marketing plans and and advertisement, stuff like that. I think a once a month meeting with seven volunteers as opposed to the chamber, which is open all the time and has paid staff there with a proven track record, I don't I don't think it's a good idea to change this to the L bid. I guess my my thoughts are, if it ain't broke, don't try and fix it. And it certainly ain't broke. Chamber's been doing a heck of a job with this Convention Visitors Bureau. And I think that the organization should stay with the chamber. And thanks very much for hearing me out. That's all I have to say.
Any public comment? And thank you, Jack.
Just as a reminder, if you dialed in by telephone and you'd like to make a public comment, go ahead and press star six to unmute.
May I speak?
State your name and address, please.
John Payne. I'm at 4789 Old Yellowstone Trail, Livingston, Montana, 59047. I think this is really I have to repeat some of the things that the executive director said of the chamber, but I think it's really unfortunate that this has been stacked in the way that it's been stacked. You you have a situation here where we've got a city manager that does not get along with a chamber executive director. So we've got two personalities that have created a major issue here for the rest of us. And fortunate for the city manager, he holds the cards here to staff the reviewing board the way he'd like to stack them, which is basically, I think, one representative from Paradise Valley. I'd like to point out that the LBID represents very specific borders of property owners in the city of Livingston. They will not represent the interests of any of the businesses or any of the people that are in the county. So you've got to understand that under the guidance and under the resources and the money of the Chamber of Commerce, they structured not only the CBB and got the CBB designation so that we could get funds from the bed tax that is generated from all of the hotels and the lodging tax from the entire county. But then they proceeded to get the TBID. And the chamber successfully did that, but it took four years of resources and time in order to finally capture them. So before we go on a hunt to get rid of the chambers, the CBB, I want you to pay attention to the fact that the city manager unfortunately is doing this out of malice and not out of some sort of, oh, we need to review this. And if you would look at the players that represent the committee that did the evaluation, you will see what I'm talking about when I say it's stacked. So before we go forward with this situation, I would highly like to recommend and I would like to beg and ask for the commission to understand that this is not an open and clear passageway to changing the designation of the CBB. The public, including people of the county and the city, have not had the appropriate or available time to comment on these issues that are the issue that's here before us. So at the very least, I would ask that the commission consider tabling this until we can get past this pandemic and continue to try to figure out how we're going to get this town and the beds here full of people again, because that's what's before us. So you, in the in the in the hardest part of the race right now, it would not be prudent to change the horse. Thank you for letting me make some comments.
Thank you, John. Any other public comment?
I do. What do I hit? Star six. Star six. What do you mean? That's what they said, isn't it?
You're good, Jamie. You can just start. We can hear you.
Oh, great, you guys. Thank you. So this is Jamie Rebsum, attorney at law, 321 South Third. I would just like the commissioners to acknowledge all of the letters that you would have gotten for the support of the Livingston Chamber today. I know that I wrote two letters that have all of my thoughts and feelings in that. When I hear Darrell start out with Mr. Cardos, can you explain to us how this started a year ago and quote what we did to get this process rolling? Leads me to believe that the commission had a hand in changing the chamber as being designated the CBB, which is so unfortunate.
Jamie, I will interrupt on that. We as a city, I always use that reference if you look back, we as a city. Getting something done. Thank you.
So you as the city, apparently, the whole the whole dang city is doing this. When when this is bigger than one person, the chamber has been around for 100 years and it's going to be around for another 100 years. We have over 300 active members that support the chamber. It is not a surprise to see chambers and cities argue about things, but that doesn't mean that we always have to agree. You see this with the chamber in Bozeman and this city commission over there. But this is way bigger than one person. The scoring criteria that I guess, quote, the city put together on this hand-selected committee by the quote city, these scoring questions, they don't even correlate to the bids submitted. How could you actually answer those questions, which A are subjective, with the bids submitted? They show no relation. And for the chamber, who has always been in compliance and won awards, which the city of Livingston has received on on the behalf of the CBB through the chamber, and not one person on the quote city's hand-selected committee recommends the chamber for the CBB, this seems completely biased. And I do think that the law is pretty clear that you cannot revoke a CBB designation unless they violated the rules or regulations, which will be up to the Montana Supreme Court to review. But in the bigger picture of our city and promoting tourism to our city, I think that it is the job of the chamber to do that because it has to be the Visiting the Visitors Bureau, which as resolution 4556 states, that the Chamber of Commerce has been the visiting bureau for over 100 years. I'd ask you guys to deny this resolution and to have the courage to do that and to acknowledge those business owners that wrote you guys letters today. And remember, we only had four days to collaborate and get letters to you guys, because I think your notice just went out last Thursday. So the chamber's not going to give up. So we really hope that you would shut this down now. And that could be the end of that. And we could all go on promoting our city for the good of our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Any other public comment? Any other public comment? If it is making sound.
Hi, Darrell. It's Joanne Lowell. I'd love to have a comment.
All right, go ahead. Go ahead, Joanna.
My husband and I do the hoot and I really, we really do try to avoid city politics. It does feel like there is one side against another here. And you can read the newspaper, letters to the editor, and see who's on which side. We don't really care about that. We're just trying to do events that help the city. And I just wanted to stand up and put my hand up in response and support of the LBID. The LBID was the first the first group that ever supported the hoot. And they have been ongoing supporters of the hoot since. I find them remarkably active on social media, especially through this pandemic. If we're if we're going to use this pandemic as an excuse not to do work, I would really support sending people to social media to see what the LBID has done during this pandemic. They're they're putting menus up of restaurants that are open. They're encouraging people to visit downtown organizations. I'm just a huge fan of the LBID and I wanted to add my hand up while people are trashing the LBID. I wanted to say, I'm a huge fan.
Thank you very much, Joanne. Any more public?
Yeah. Hi, this is Jackie, 166 Miller Drive. And I want to say that I do work for the Chamber of Commerce and Convention and Visitors Bureau. But I did send you guys all an email with my thoughts. But just a couple more was that I don't think the L bid is doing a bad job of promoting our downtown. But that's exactly what they're supposed to do, is promote our downtown businesses. And I think they're doing a great job. They got, how they hired Chris. And she's doing a good job with all the social media stuff, but with the CBB, with the CBB, it is the generalization of Livingston. I'm muted. Okay, I'm back.
Keep going.
And I believe that because of the broad spectrum that we can reach at the chamber, that it is our job to promote Livingston in a broad way. And that is what the CBB funds are for, is promoting the broad spectrum of Livingston and Park County to the entire world. I'm not putting the L bid down. I think they're doing a good job. But it needs to be a broad spectrum marketing for Park County and Livingston. So I think the chamber. Okay, I'm back again. And I guess that's that's my thoughts on it is that the why would you mess something up that's going so well? The numbers that they give you trying to say that the CBB is not doing a good job are because hotels, two hotels closed down in the wintertime now. So of course, the numbers are going to go down. That's exactly where the money is coming from. It's not the fact that we aren't marketing. It's the fact that they close down. You can't get any money in if they're not open. So that's my thought. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. Any other public comment?
Hello, this is Mark Bassett. I am the chairman of the Livingston Chamber of Commerce. Can everybody hear me? Am I unmuted?
Yep, everyone can hear you, Mark. Go ahead.
All right, thank you. I would like to put in my opinion that at the very least, this item does need to be tabled. I agree with Mr. Payne on that. At the very least, the other side of that is, I would The other side of that is, I would rather see that this item be voted in the negative. The Livingston Chamber of Commerce is the Visitors Bureau for Livingston and for most of Park County. It's not just us. You know, we're reaching all the way Clyde Park, Will Saw, heading north and all the way to Gardner, and sending people to the Gardner, the Gardner Chamber of Commerce. It is a organization that I have now been on the board for, this is my third year. And the work that is put into maintaining the CBB is not a part-time position. It is not something that can be done once or twice a month to make it happen. It takes quite a bit of my time as well, which is something that perhaps the LBID president is not aware of, but he will be signing quite a bit of paperwork, and he'll have to make sure that that information is correct. There's a lot of things that take place with this convention and Visitors Bureau on the state side that has to be done absolutely correctly, or we do not maintain it. You know, it's just not going to be here. They'll take it away from us. They don't have any reason not to. They'd rather give the money someplace where it is going to be used very effectively. I'm not saying the LBID does not do a good job. They do the job that they were created for and which the city created them as, to take care of the downtown businesses. And they do a great job at it. The Livingston Chamber of Commerce is the Visitors Bureau and has been for 100 years, and it's still going to end up being the Visitors Bureau regardless. The difference will be is now we'll be doing it with less money. And I just, with all of the infighting in the same sandbox that all of these organizations in Livingston have going on, it is, in my opinion, ridiculous that we can't all get along. Over the last three years, I have made several attempts to bring all of those small organizations or different organizations that the LBID, the LBO, all of the acronyms that I can think of, to come to our chamber meetings, to come to the CV board meetings, because we need the help. Nobody ever shows up, and that includes the city. On occasion, we will get the city manager. I have seen him at a couple of the chamber meetings. But at the same time, it's one of those, without input, we can't meet the needs of these other organizations who seem to think that they can do a better job than us if we never get any input from them. So our CBB board meetings are fully open to the public, as well as our chamber meetings, and there's always board positions available. So to me, this is a moot point. It should have never even gotten this far. I did make those attempts to try and head all of this off well before this started and never did get any kind of response other than, we'll get back to you. I appreciate your time. Thank you. Good day.
Thank you, Mark. More public comment? Any more public comment?
Hi, this is John Payne one more time. Is that appropriate?
No, John, sorry. You already went and used your minutes.
Okay.
Thank you. I know there's a lot of people with opinions.
If you could repeat it one more time. I think there's people trying to get on their phones and call in.
Okay. What did you ask, Leslie?
I think if you could repeat it one more time, that they need to star six so that they can use their phones.
Hey, Michael, would you do that, please? Just how people can call in easier.
Sure. Just a reminder, if you're on your computer, you can hit spacebar to unmute. And if you'd like to talk via telephone, hit star six to unmute and just announce yourself.
This is Patricia Grabo.
Go ahead, Patricia. We can hear you.
Okay, thank you. This is Patricia Grabo at 204 East Calendar Street here in Livingston. Thank you for the opportunity to talk on this. I am, we are asking in the business community for the city commission to consider tabling this resolution as we go through the pandemic. And I speak personally from this, as I, as you may know, that my grandfather died in the flu epidemic of 1918. It's a very dangerous time for us to be separated from each other. And there is every possibility. And I don't think people really understand all the implications of what the future of the TBID, for example, is, because it could very easily not be under the city. It is an independent organization. And should the city commission decide to make this transfer today, it would involve about $9,000, and that's about it. And it would separate this community at a time when we need to be working together. All we are asking is that the city commission take a serious look at tabling this as we move through the pandemic, because by the end of it, we may not have a CBB, because we will not have the $18,000 worth of taxes that requires us to have a CBB. In addition, we might not even have an L-Bid. I talked to some of the members of that board, and I have, Jack Luther and I pretty often attend the L-Bid meetings. As the president of the Downtown Building Owner and Business Association for the last 13 years, I have formed that organization. That organization comes up for a vote next year as to whether or not it will exist. And it is not with the separation and the divisiveness that has been created by this action of taking away something that belongs to another organization. The business community does not look well on this, and the business owners do not look well on this. It is, it is right now time for us and people who have not necessarily cared about each other or like each other, but it is our time during this pandemic to work together. And I think this is the best way to work together right now, is to simply table this, let it go ahead the way it is, and then, and let people settle down in terms of their relationships with each other. And let's move ahead as a community, a community that cares about each other, a community that cares about our future as we come out of this. We have no idea, as I said in a letter today, what the communities look at, is they'll look like at the end of this tornado. And it's really important right now that we just work together, and a tabling will allow us to do that, and the community knows it. So what would be so harmful right now? To table it and then allow for public workshops, allow for all of us to take a serious look at all this as we emerge from this pandemic? I'm worried about my children. So I think it's important for us to focus on the most important thing, which is helping each other, and then emerge from this as a community who cares. Please make this consideration to do. It is terribly important to our future. We'll come out proud of ourselves.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Can you state your name and address? Any public comment? I know there's more to be said. No other public comment? Okay, are we closing it to public comment then? Last thing said?
Excuse me. My name is Eric Bradley. I live at 276 St. Creek Road, Livingston, Montana, 59047. Hello?
Go ahead, Eric. Go ahead.
So from a strictly empirical data standpoint, looking at growth numbers and tourism dollars overall in the area, I have a tough time understanding how we came to the conclusion that we needed to change horses at midstream. So I don't necessarily support changing the CBB monies to a new or a different organization from the outfit that's gotten us to where we are today. So I don't support this, this move that seems to have the overwhelming support of a number of key players in the city administration. I disagree with Mike Cardos on this one, and I just wanted to voice my disagreement and reiterate that some of the key points that John Painkiller made, I tend to agree with what he had to say.
Okay, thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
Hi, this is Jennifer Estes. I reside at 202 Fiddle Creek, Livingston, Montana, 59047. I own Calamity's Boutique on Main Street, as well as Tri-County Heating and Cooling on Park. And I have to agree with the rest of the people who've talked about tabling this issue. I don't feel that during a pandemic, we should be sitting here on cellphones or computers trying to host meetings, when it would be better if the whole community can be involved and we can be at the city department in person. So with this being said, I feel that this should be tabled and come back at a later date to discuss, so that it can be taken care of properly. I do feel that the LBID is doing a great job with what they're doing downtown, and that is what they're designed to do, and they do support our businesses on Main Street and Second Street. And I feel that they can continue doing that, just how they have been. However, I also feel, as a board member on the chamber, going on three years, that we have done a phenomenal job busting our butt. I personally worked on the CBB stuff, and it's not easy. So for people to think that they can come in here and just take it over, that's far-fetched, because we put a lot of blood, sweat, and tears into that, and it's frustrating to see that it's even a consideration to, that we're even here. So the LBID is not even qualified to do it based upon their rules. They're not legally qualified under the rules to operate the CBB. And so I just want to say that as a business member in this community and a board member, I feel that it just needs to stay the way that it is. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you, Jennifer.
I was shaking because I was getting mad.
Any other public comment? Okay, any last call on public comment? I'm trying to give a little extra time because I take a few to sign in or to be heard sometimes. Do we have public comment?
Hello?
Hi, who is this?
Well, this is Kathleen Call. And I live at 19 Lake Drive, and I'm a member of the TBID. And I do appreciate what the chamber is saying. I do understand. My problem is that, I understand also that a lot of the money that comes from the bed tax that the Murray Hotel and other hotels in town, I'm the owner of the Murray, provides, helps support things that the chamber is doing. And I do appreciate the chamber. But there's a real reason why a lot of business owners and other people in the community would like to see some fresh blood and a change. I believe that the LBID could definitely pay, with the money we're bringing in, a full-time person to run the LBD as well as the TBID information and the CBB. I think that collaboration is a huge thing here, and what I see in our town is that we are lacking collaboration. We need people who can get along with everybody, work together. And again, I appreciate the chamber, and I understand all the chamber board members who are phoning in, and I appreciate your efforts and what you do and what you give up for your time to help our community. But I think we need to collaborate, and that's not what's happening. I would really support and really ask the commissioners to look at this further and consider the emails and the letters and the comments from other business owners in town as far as trying to find a stronger way to collaborate in Livingston. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen. Other public comment? Any other public comment? There's a lot more people here than have spoken, so I want to give you your chance. Last call, public comment? Okay. I am closing public comment at this time, unless there's a last comment. Okay, commissioners, public comment is now closed. Commissioners? The floor is open.
I have a question about the capability of the LBID to handle what's now being done by the CBB. Has that evaluation been done, or, I know it's a volunteer outfit. Would that change- Would that change?
Michael, can you answer that?
Okay, so part of the proposal from the LBID was a full-time executive director. And part of the reason for that is by state law, the director of the CBB is also the director of the Tourism Business Improvement District as well as the Business Improvement District. Those are both in state law. So the executive director of the CBB will effectively become the executive director of all three of those organizations.
Thank you. I've got one more question, please. Were any of the members of the Evaluation Board members of the TBID?
Yes, one of the evaluation members was a board member of the TBID.
Thank you.
Other commissioners, questions, comments?
And real quick, just so you can see, I just want to share this on my screen so you can see it. Currently, we had not been, the director of the CBB had not been the director of the LBID. But this is MCA Title VII, Chapter 12, Part 11. So 7121121. The highlighted portion there shows that the director for a business improvement district created for the purposes of 71211024, which in this case is promotion of the district, must be the executive director of a nonprofit convention and visitors bureau as defined in the section on nonprofit visitor bureaus if a nonprofit convention and visitors bureau is operating within the governing body's jurisdiction. So because we have a CBB, there's a state law that requires them to be the director of the LBID. So I just wanted to have you see that because it has not been done in the past.
Michael, can you state that again, just in a short, concrete way?
Yeah, just in general, right now, the director of the CBB is not acting as the director of the LBID, so of the Downtown Business Improvement District. However, in part of the research for this, we found the state law that said that is actually a requirement. Because there is a CBB, the executive director of that convention and visitor bureau has to be the executive director of both the Tourism Business Improvement District and the Livingston Business Improvement District. So there'll be one executive director from whichever organization is chosen. And they will be the executive director for all three of those organizations.
Okay, commissioners, any other comments? Questions? Quentin, Melissa?
Quentin here. Yeah, I've been talking to numerous people. And I've gotten the, you know, obviously, the email letters. They tried, we finally least acknowledging that I got the mail. Unfortunately, I can't respond like a governor or senator. I am my executive assistant. I've taken a good look at both proposals and stuff like that from both the chamber and the LBI. And I think, I don't, there's no better time right now than to to take a change. And when the community is ready to reopen with some fresh blood and some new insight into this process. You know, we're not talking about a ton of money and stuff like that. But I do believe at this point, I'd like to see, I like the competition, I like to see that. Other than that, that's all I have for the month. I'd like to hear from the rest of the community.
Okay. Thank you. Melissa?
Yeah, first I want to, thank you, Drell. First, I want to start by thanking the Chamber of Commerce and the Business Improvement District for both applying and submitting proposals. And emails and pre-pandemic emails, pre-pandemic phone calls and conversations in person about this topic. I think it's an example of how much Livingston cares about our community. And I so my first, some of them have already been answered. But I did want to ask, there's been some comments insinuating that one group might not be capable or have the scope of work to be able to do the CBB work. And so I just wanted to get some clarification about the scope of work of these two organizations and if they both are qualified and if they're legally qualified. That's my first, my first question, Drell.
Thank you. Courtney or Michael with Courtney or Courtney with Michael, address?
So the CBB itself is what does the marketing. It's not the chamber, or it wouldn't be the LBID. It's the CBB as an organization. So whoever is designated as the CBB gets that scope. So they'll have the scope of the entire CBB district. And that will be their charge as far as marketing goes, locally, nationally, internationally. So whatever organization has it, has the same scope. And they will then, as the CBB, market it that. They won't market it as the LBID or as the chamber. They market it through CBB funds, technically by the budget that the CBB sends to the Tourism Advisory Council. So the scope is the same, no matter which organization does it. As far as legality, you probably may be see Courtney, but we'll let you listen to Courtney.
So to answer your question about are they legally qualified? They are legally qualified under the tax statutes and then legally qualified under the Tourism and Advisory Council rules. And they had to meet both qualifications in order to apply. And that was part of the language in the request for proposal that was put out initially. And so they had to meet those qualifications to even be able to apply.
And just to follow up on that, I think there was some questions on their ability to promote tourism in and out. So let me share you some additional state code. Again, this is Title VII, Chapter 12, Part 11, which is a Business Improvement District section. And you can see here, under 1102, which is the purpose, specifically, it's to aid in tourism promotion and marketing within the district. So that's for all businesses improvement districts. So tourism has always been part of business improvement districts. It's actually one of the purposes that they exist. Currently, that tourism promotion is for the district itself. If they became a CBB, then that tourism promotion would become for the scope of the CBB.
Melissa, is that enough information or of an answer for you on that?
Yeah, that answers that question. Thank you. Thank you, Courtney and Michael. And then my next question is, and I forgot to thank the people on the selection committee too because that's, they also did important work to contribute to where we are right now. And I forgot them in my thanks. The other, the other question I have is quite a few people have asked us to table this topic. And so I really want to talk about what that means in terms of what does tabling mean, but also in terms of the timeline that we saw earlier. Because I don't think that tabling means that nothing happens necessarily. And that's what I want to talk about, is what it, yeah, thank you.
Michael, can you bring up that part of the timeline document in the agenda?
Yeah, I'll see if we can get that shared for you. So in this case, tabling is effectively the same as killing. There's no difference between the two because of the timeline. You can go to the next page. You can see that basically, the timeline starts in May for fiscal year '21, which would start one July. So there's no, if we're going to review it, I think it would be more appropriate just to give a yes or no vote. Because tabling is the same as voting no. The chamber is already designated as the CBB. If that's not changed, they will continue on as the CBB. So a table is the same as voting to not change a designation from the chamber. Effectively is how it works, there's no difference. So there's no table and pick this up later. The timeline doesn't allow for that. It would be at least a year before you could look at it again.
Okay, thank you. Melissa, do you have any more on that?
Drell, I don't know how you want to have, deal with chat mentions, chat on that topic came up from the public, so.
I think the public will just have to read the chat if it gives more time to an individual. If we read it.
I just wanted to just wanted to make sure you, yeah, had control over that. Okay. The other thing that I, just a minute. Bedtime and I have a six-year-old walking in the room. This is every commissioner's dream. Iris, can you come back to me, please?
Okay, Melissa, are you still on? Yeah, it's a lot harder to have these meetings from home, for sure. I'm not getting
Yes. Thank you for your patience with that. The other, the other thing that I wanted to share is that I feel like I have gotten a lot of feedback. And there are a lot of people that are really passionate about the chamber. And there's a lot of people that are really passionate about the Business Improvement District. And the one sort of unifying message, I feel like, that I keep hearing over and over is how important it is to the business community to have strong collaboration across our community. And I've heard that from people within the Business Improvement District as it stands. And I've heard that from people outside. And I've heard it from all different people, from different types of businesses across our community. So I just wanted to make sure that I shared that with all of you commissioners, since we hear different comments sometimes. But that's been sort of the outstanding theme that keeps being brought to me is the interest in strong community collaboration. And I think most of my questions have already been answered in Michael's answer earlier, so thank you. That's it for now, Drell.
Okay, any other commission comments or questions at the moment?
I just would like to add that as far as collaboration and community involvement, it wasn't that long ago we had the Business Revolution Contest that was here, presented by Deluxe Corporation. And that was headed up pretty much by the LBD. And I was very impressed how they got people together from not only business, but through our community. And it's one of the, I was impressed by how fast that happened and how professionally it was done. So that kind of, you know, weighs a little bit with me on my decision this evening. We have a lot of talented people in this area, in the chamber and with the LBD and everything else. But I just, you know, I just want to put that out, that there's a good energy out there. And that's what I like to see. Thank you.
Thank you, Quentin. I guess I will just comment on a few things. There was a statement made somewhere towards the beginning. And it was, it was stated that this is about a personality conflict. And I don't disagree, there is a personality conflict. But I don't think this decision is about a personality conflict. That I'm not basing my decision on the fact that I can obviously see two people don't get along. That's what it is. But if, if it's down to a personality conflict, then I'm not doing my job. Another thing that was stated is I, it was stated that the LBID won't market to anyone else in the county, only city, because they only care about that. I think that's a question you should ask them, if that's how they would market our community just to what they believe in and in their small circle. I don't, or I don't agree with that personally. I don't think that's how either of the entities work. I've heard the word, it was out at Malice, that this whole thing. But on the other hand, throughout time, this is a long time of information coming at us. This is not just current, past couple weeks. We have had a lot of people giving us a lot of feedback all the way back to the parade route issue, which is sort of where I think some of it started. But it's not like just suddenly we started getting feedback. I think we've heard a lot over the years and we're listening. And another thing, I, I am a little, I think I need to stand up for the committee that made their decision and the recommendation to the commission. And without even knowing the name or anything, it's been pretty offensive that, to me, in regards to how people have made statements that they're incapable of making this decision because it's stacked. And they can't look at this issue because they can't look at it fairly. And I don't think that's fair to them. Because any person I'm looking at right now on Zoom, I wouldn't say that about you either. Because I think all of us look at things in a pretty neutral way. We try to come up with the best with what we know and what we think about. So in defense of them, I think they're smart people making a decision. You just might not agree with it, but it doesn't make them incapable of that decision. You know, the pandemic, obviously, I mean, we're in it deep, a lot of us, and some people very deep. But I don't think that should drive my decision. Because I think we can move forward as a community and get through this, whether we're in a pandemic or not. And this is a decision that's important, especially more so down the road than it was even before the pandemic, that we want to be able to market ourselves and help get out of where we're at as a community. Another issue is we have issue is we have really appreciated the letters, multiple letters. I know the board of the Chamber Board is very, very vocal and very supportive of the work you guys are doing. And that's what boards should do. They should support you and I appreciate that and I'm listening. Sorry, I have a lot of notes here. Oh, and one of the big things I starred here, I lost it in all my stars, but I, like Melissa, believe this is about collaboration. And we, I think we've been lacking in some collaboration for some time. And I hope we can get back to that at one point. It's too much conflict over small issues that we disagree on. And then we bring it and it becomes big. So, yeah, I'd like to get back to a more collaborative look at everything we do in this community. And I have stated it multiple times. I said the one thing I've always loved about Livingston since moving here, and now I'm at 18 years. I'm just a little baby in the eyes of the old timers, but the one thing I love is that you can get a bunch of flaming liberals and a bunch of ultra conservatives together. We usually can get along. We got to get back to that because the conflicts that continue to happen over things, decisions or whatever, they're not helping us. So I'd like us to get back to less conflicts, more collaboration. That's all I'm going to say for now. And I want to make sure I open it up and have last comments from the other commissioners.
Drell, can I just get clarification on one more topic?
Yes, please, go ahead.
I feel like it's important to clarify because I just think that there's been... The way things are being talked about, sometimes it's not always clear. But it's my understanding that both the chamber and the Business Improvement District, independently of the CBB, work on tourism. And that is not going to change regardless of the CBB. Is that correct or am I wrong in my assumption?
Michael, can you answer that?
I can't speak for the chamber or the LBID, but the assumption would be, yes, they would both continue in their functions, whether that's the chamber promoting business in the region or whether that's the LBID promoting the downtown businesses through their marketing campaigns. The only difference with the CBB is that that money is from state bed tax and then is used to promote the entire CBB region. So yes, I would assume that they would both continue with their functions as they are now.
Melissa, you still have this floor. Do you have anything else?
No, thank you.
Any other comments from our commissioners? That's it?
Is that working?
Warren, you have something?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to say that my decision is being made strictly on what's best for Livingston and only what's best for Livingston. There's no personal animosity involved. Or as a phone caller suggested this morning, spinelessness. I just want to see the city thrive and go forward and come out of this era the fastest and the best way possible. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Warren. I do have another comment on that. We actually have had interesting kind of veiled threats against us as well. By, I mean, some things like if you... We will make sure that you are driven out of office in so many words if you support the CBB going to the L-Bed versus the chamber. And we will make sure it happens because this person, even though they're from the county, will make sure that they make our lives miserable. We've had that. It's fun. Another point that that people have said is, and if I... Every time I hear it, I actually get a little mad and I don't get mad very easily and I get pretty worked up. And that is, we are just following whatever Michael says. He tells us what to think, that we're just followers. I think my mom, if she could be in our meeting right now, would probably say that's not true of me. And from about one year old on, she knew that I wasn't a follower. And I don't follow passively through anything in life. And so the reason we're here today is to help our community to become better, whether it's the chamber or the LBID. It's about us working together to make something better, not about a conflict or a personality issue and/or about me following along because I'm told what the thing can say by the city manager. So I disagree with that. And I hope to not hear, continue to hear it. Because again, it goes right back to what I said earlier, that just the disrespect towards this committee of people who made a decision that others didn't agree with, it's kind of a reflection on how we are sometimes stated as being just followers. Like this committee couldn't think, even though they're like some of the most amazing people in our community, but they couldn't think to make a decision that they were just following along. What was it? It was stacked. That was the word someone said. That is pretty disrespectful to them and the hard work that they do for our community because they do it in multiple places, as do we in the commission. And we're not stacked either. But as far as next steps, commissioners, are we ready to pitch up or make a motion? Or do we have anything else to say?
If I may, I just want to echo Drell's sentiments. This is not personal and it should never be personal. We should keep the attacks out of it. It doesn't serve anybody any good to threaten and stuff like that. I ran to be a city commissioner, not be a puppet. And people that know me know that. I do think for myself. And thank you, Drell, for your comment. Whenever ready to entertain a motion, I'm ready.
Do we need to move to change the, to correct the date on Resolution 4894 before we move forward?
Oh, go ahead, Drell.
Yeah, we can state it in the resolution or in the motion, right? Correct?
Correct. You can just move to move to approve the resolution with the amendment.
Yeah. Amending 456.
Yes. I'm trying to reopen my agenda, sorry.
Yeah, me too.
So the resolution number is actually 4894. So the motion would have to be to approve 4894 with the amendment of the effective date of 1 July 2020.
1 July.
So so you can read the motion, whoever, whichever is going to. But I'm going to start it with, do I have a motion on Resolution Number 4894?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 4894, which is amending Resolution 456, 4556, changing the date to 7/2020.
I'll second.
We have a motion by... Second, maybe, roll call, please.
Chair Hoagland?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Or?
Commissioner, maybe?
For.
Commissioner Newt?
For. Motion passes. Next, we're moving on to action items. We have no action items tonight. And we have city manager comments next.
Thank you, ma'am chair. I made most of my city manager comments on Thursday. I just do want to give an update that the revolving loan fund should be online by the end of the week. So if you're a small business and you're looking for a bridge loan to get through, please go and start looking for their website. We will put a link on it on the city website once it's up and running. But they should be available by the end of the week to start the application process.
And you said it would be... It will be on the website, the how to access the bridge funds as well as where else would that be?
They will publish a website on their own and we'll link to it from our site. So that'd probably be the easiest place to find it.
Okay.
Just to be clear, that's not part of the PPE, correct?
No, that's the, so that's the Park County Development Corporation running our revolving loan fund. Yeah, and they're also doing it for the county. So there'll be a county version and a city version, both.
Yeah, I talked to Katie yesterday about that. It should be... She thought it would be up today. Is it up today?
I haven't checked yet, but I know they were going to get it up probably either today or tomorrow.
Thank you.
Okay, is that it, Michael?
That is it from the city manager. Yes, thank you.
Okay, Melissa.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask, who's the point of contact for that? If business owners are having a hard time accessing the website? Is there, they can just call?
Yeah, if they can't find the website, just contact Katie Weaver. She's the point on that.
Okay, okay. Thank you. And then the other thing on my mind, Drell, is just thanking all of the good people that are doing so much for our community right now to feed people and take care of the kids and all the healthcare workers, just like we talked about last Thursday. I don't think there's much more for me to say than that. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. Warren?
I think that Livingston is by and large doing a terrific job of cooperating. The streets are pretty much empty, which is a good thing, but not a good thing. Relatively soon. And when it does end, I think that the level of cooperation along the lines of things like shopping locally should help pull us out fairly quickly. Thank you.
Thanks, thanks, Warren. Quentin?
Yes, I really give a shout out. It's obvious our healthcare professionals and stuff like that. But my friends at Town and Country Grocery Store in Albertson's, those guys have been amazing. That's all I have.
I said this on Thursday, but I'll say it again. I really appreciate the community's approach and collaboration that has gone into dealing with the pandemic. And in our small town, we've been very fortunate with people staying healthy enough and, you know, not, I mean, so far, not having anyone pass away. There's also the fact that people are listening. I mean, I know we, the skate park was closed and I go by there a lot. And I really appreciate that kids actually listened. On occasion, you'll see someone kind of go in and up and over and kind of go through like they can't help themselves. And then they keep riding. So I've seen a couple of those times, but it's just a moment. And they're, even the kids are understanding the importance. I also would like to thank again all the people that have made masks and the work that's gone into that. I feel like when I was first trying to get a mask myself, because I don't sew, it was sort of like looking for, you know, that $100 bill on the ground during a festival. Like you'd be lucky to find it. But, thanks, Quentin. But I'd really like to thank the community that has gone out of their way to support making those masks so that now you can have a couple in your car or, you know, one at work, one in your car. So you can stay safe and keep others safe. Other than that, I just want to, again, thank the community for all their hard work. So on that, do I have a motion from the commission for adjournment?
I move to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor? I...
Yes, please.
This meeting of the Livingston City Commission is adjourned at 7:31.
Thank you, Drell.
Thank you.